Member Harris.
Here.
Chair Lantus.
Here.
Looks like we have a quorum.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to ask the Planning Commission members to make any declaration of any conflict of interest or of any ex parte or outside communication that might influence their ability to hear all sides on any item on the agenda so that they might come to a fair decision. Hearing none, we'll move on. First item on the agenda is public comments. Persons who wish to address the City Planning Commission regarding an item on the agenda may do so as that agenda item is called. Persons who wish to address the City Planning Commission regarding items not on the agenda and that are under the jurisdiction of the City Planning Commission may do so at the time when called upon by the chair. Comments on personnel matters and matters pending in court or with other outside tribunals are not permitted. Speakers are limited to three minutes. Any public comment entered via online chat will not be recognized or commented on. Any presentation is for informational purposes only. The Planning Commission will take comments under advisement. And again, we've got several items on the agenda and since we usually have no one here, I'm assuming everybody's here to speak to one of the items. So if you're here just as a general comment, something that's not on the agenda, now's your time to come forward, state your name, where you live, and tell us what you need to say. Seeing none, we'll move on. Consent agenda. The May 30th, 2024 special meeting minutes and the June 12th, 2024 meeting minutes as presented. Do I hear a motion to accept?
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
They'll be printed in the meeting. All right, next, we're going to move on to public hearings. And we have two separate public hearings. One is on 818 West Tenth Street. It's a rezon application. And the other is at 818 West Tenth Street. And it's the same, it's for the same type of rezoning application. We're going to hear both of those together. And then if we take action, we'll take action on them separately in order to comply with the law. But since they are together, since it's one applicant that's applying for both of them, to speed the process along tonight, we're going to hear both of them at the same time. So that's where we're going to start. And Zach, would you like to make your presentation? I might add, the way the public hearing, I'll first, I'll open the public hearing. And then I will add that the way this typically goes is we ask the staff to make their recommendation or their presentation. Then we ask the applicant if they have anything they'd like to add. And then we open it up for public comments. Okay? All right, Zach?
All right. So this is an application for a rezoning of the properties at 818 and 822 West Tenth Street to include an overlay of HOO, Housing Opportunity Overlay District, on the existing R2 medium density residential district as requested by Slade Van Venter of Van Knight Homes. Finding as, as you've said, findings for these applications which are separate have been combined for this presentation. The subject site at 818 West Tenth is currently a vacant long lot of approximately 0.27 acres or 11,800 square feet and zone R2, two-family or medium-density residential. The property at 822 West Tenth is approximately 0.39 acres or 16,900 square feet and is currently one large long lot with an existing home and accessory buildings also zoned R2. The surrounding area is residential with R2 zoning and residential uses in all four main directions and R3 zoning to the northwest. The applicant is proposing a replat of the property. Preliminary sketch is included with the application that would, if approved in the future, allow for an additional or single-family homes be constructed if this overlay district application is approved. To the left, you can see the GIS image of 818 West Tenth in the existing lot with utilities shown. The property again is currently zoned R2, which would not change with the proposed overlay district. And the property is currently vacant and has access to all utilities and services. This GIS image is of 822 West Tenth. And again, shows all existing utilities and services that are available to the property. It is also currently zoned R2. And again, that would not change with the proposed overlay district. And as stated in the background, it does have an existing house and accessory buildings on the site. To the left is a current zoning map of the subject properties which are indicated by yellow dots there in the center. And then the wider neighborhood outlined in red. Like the subject properties, the surrounding neighborhood is zoned R2 medium-density residential, which is that medium dark blue color. The apartments to the northwest are zoned R3, which is high-density residential and is that dark blue color. And R1, which is single-family only residential, is shown in the lightest blue on the map. On that screen, it can be a little hard to see, but the large area to the south and these other larger areas are actually green on this map. And they are places like the high school parks and other public and accessible locations such as that. So it looks like a lighter blue, but it is actually a green. To the left of this content is the applicant proposal for an eventual replat of the property to create three additional lots out of the existing two at this corner and then one in the northwest. The proposed rezoning here this evening would allow for slightly smaller lots to allow for additional housing to be built. The proposed replat at left is very preliminary and staff notes that there is one, again, lot at the top right that would not adhere to current subdivision standards. The applicant is aware of this and the proposal brought to commission. If this rezoning is approved, for this replat would address the issue if the zoning is approved. Here is a proposed elevation of the single-family homes that the applicant is hoping to build on site. On the left-hand side, we have the elevation showing the front of the house. And on the right-hand side, we have the proposed floor plan. Again, these are single-family homes that are proposed for the site. If the rezoning is approved, the applicant would move forward with a replat of the property to create slightly smaller lots that would be allowed within this zoning district. Moving on to findings. In determining a recommendation, staff found the following. Item one, whether the change in classification would be consistent with the intent and purposes of these regulations. Staff finds that the proposed use would be consistent with the intent and purpose of the zone in which it is located. The surrounding blocks are zoned R2 and R3, which both allow for accommodation of a variety of residential types. And the underlying zoning of R2 would remain on this property, limiting the potential uses to those allowed by right or through a conditional use permit per the zoning code. The proposed HOO overlay would simply allow for slightly reduced lot size requirements to allow for additional homes to be built. Item two, the character and condition of the surrounding neighborhood and its effect on the proposed change. As stated, the surrounding area is residential in use, which the proposed rezoning would maintain. The applicant is proposing additional single-family homes, which would be allowed by right, given the underlying zoning, and which the rezoning to include the overlay would not impact. Item three, whether the proposed amendment is made necessary because of changed or changing conditions in the area affected, and if so, the nature of such change or changing conditions. This condition is applicable on a case-by-case basis and staff did not find any conditions changing in the area that would make this amendment strictly necessary. However, within the larger community, Ottawa is in need of additional housing options for a variety of price points and living styles, which the applicant is attempting to address through this rezoning. Item four, that the current zoning and use of nearby properties and the effect on existing nearby land uses upon such a change in classification. The surrounding areas, again, are zoned primarily R2 medium-density residential with an apartment complex zoned R3 high-density residential to the northwest. The proposed HOO zoning overlay would do as it may, as its name implies, which is just overlay the existing district. The underlying zoning of R2 would remain, as well as all other restrictions and use permissions and limitations that district entails within Article Six of the zoning code. Next, whether every use that would be permitted on the property as reclassified would be compatible with the uses permitted on other property in the immediate vicinity. As outlined within the zoning code, the underlying and current zoning of R2 allows for residential uses such as single-family and duplexes by right. The proposed uses would be compatible with the surrounding properties. And as stated, the proposed uses would be single-family homes, which comprise the majority of the surrounding neighborhoods. Next, the suitability of the applicant's property for uses to which it has been restricted. The site is suitable for the proposed residential development. As noted in the background, the applicant will be seeking a replat of the property that creates potentially four, five lots out of the existing two, including the existing dwelling and accessory buildings becoming their own separate lot. To allow for that number of lots and to meet code requirements, the applicant is first applying for this rezoning that would allow these lots to be created. The subdivision code otherwise does not allow the creation of lots that do not meet the standards of the subdivision code and the regulations of the zoning code based on the district the lot is in. Next, the length of time the subject property has remained vacant or undeveloped as zoned. The property located at 822 West Tenth is not currently vacant and has a single-family home and accessory buildings on the parcel. And the property at 818 West Tenth is currently vacant and, per the applicant, a home was located on the site until approximately 10 to 15 years ago when it was removed. Next, whether adequate sewer and water facilities and all other needed public services exist or can be provided to serve the uses that would be permitted on the property if it were reclassified. The property does have access to all existing city utilities and services and the rezoning would not impact that access. The creation of any additional lots through the replating process would address any potential access and easement concerns to existing utilities. As it stands, there are no concerns regarding this. The general amount of vacant land that currently has the same zoning classification proposed for the subject property, particularly in the vicinity of the subject property and any special circumstances that make a substantial part of such vacant land available or not available for development. HOO, or the overlay districts, are relatively uncommon in the city, being a slightly newer zoning district, with the other R2 HOO districts being the development southeast of the corner of Wilson and Davis and an R2 HOO district being located at the intersection of Tenth and Cherry. These overlays serve as opportunities to provide additional housing that otherwise may be restricted by the underlying zoning. And it should be noted that both of these are either in the middle of an approved development or are currently undergoing a review for a future development. Whether the proposed amendment would be in conformance to and further enhance the implementation of the city's comprehensive plan. And the city's current comprehensive plan has a stated goal of a variety of types and affordability of housing options. And this proposed rezoning would address that goal in allowing additional housing to be built. And then whether the relative gain to the public health, safety, and general welfare outweighs the hardship imposed upon the applicant by not upgrading the value of the property by such reclassification. Staff has found in this case that hardship does not apply as the proposed use would be allowed by right regardless of the rezoning. Rather, this rezoning just allows additional quantity of said use. This is balanced by staff not finding any gain or loss in the public health, safety, or general welfare that would be created by this change. Such other factors as the Planning Commission may deem relevant from the facts and evidence presented in the application. In general, staff just notes that a petition from the surrounding neighbors in opposition to this rezoning was received by the city on July 1st, 2024 and said petition has been included in the packet. Lastly, the recommendation of staff. Staff recommends that the application to a rezoning to HOO overlay in the existing R2 zoning to allow the development of the proposed dwellings be approved. The project as proposed meets applicable standards and conditions for rezoning and is compatible with surrounding land use and consistent with the neighborhood's character, as well as the stated goals and intent of the zoning code and future land use map. So with that, as stated, staff does recommend approval of the proposed rezonings at 818 and 822 West Tenth from R2 medium-density residential to R2/HOO medium-density residential and housing opportunity overlay with no additional conditions for approval. And the recommendation of the Planning Commission will be forwarded onto the next available city commission hearing for final determination.
Thank you, Zach. Any questions for Zach?
I know that in general, lot sizes and requirements have changed over the years. How would these lots compare in this overlay to other lots in this established neighborhood?
In this established neighborhood, so yes, they have varied over time. I mean, very early on, cities had a 25-foot width requirement for lots and now we have a minimum of 50. This is fairly standard from throughout most of the city, beyond lots that have been combined for various purposes to about 100 to 150. It does tend to vary. I will note that the applicant is requesting this zoning to allow for lots that are very slightly smaller than our required 50-foot width for a lot. I believe the current proposal brings them down to 47 feet in width as opposed to the regulated 50.
Okay. And but this is an older neighborhood. So is this still in line with what's already currently in this neighborhood?
It was in line with what was currently done there.
Okay, so it will fit, potentially, potentially.
Potentially.
Okay.
Anything else? Is the applicant here? Do they, does he wish to make, or do they wish to make a presentation? Name and where you live, please.
Okay. Slade Van Venter of Van Knight Homes, 3355 Lebat Terrace. Thank you, Zach. I think you did a great job explaining that. Couple things I would just emphasize. This would allow me to build one more house instead of three. I can build four. So we've gained one more house on existing infrastructure, which I think is a win for the city and for everyone. Another thing that I was going to say. So the housing opportunity overlay allows for just, like you said, slightly smaller lots. Right now in R2, you could create a lot down to 6,500 square feet. And this overlay would allow you to go down to 5,800 square feet. So 700 square foot difference, not a huge, it's not a huge, you know, difference from what is already allowed. Also, you know, with R2 duplexes, triplex could be built currently without any conditional use or any rezoning. And in R2, you need 4,500 square feet per unit for duplex. Triplex, 3,500 square foot per unit. So as far as density, it could be more dense as far as those regulations, you know, compared to looking at, I'm looking to instigate family, not multifamily. So those are just a couple of things I wanted to mention. Do you guys have any, any questions for me?
I don't. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to open the public portion of it now. And again, I want to remind you that we will have a timer up here and she will let you know when three minutes are up. I'm guessing by a loud audible tone. And we'd ask you to respect that. Also, we're here tonight to talk about zoning. The only issue we're here to talk about is should we put the housing opportunity overlay to allow him to build one more house? There might be some ancillary stuff you want to talk about, but it's really not germane to this issue tonight. So with that, I'll open it up. We'd ask you to come up, state your name, state your address, and give us whatever thing that you agree or disagree with as it pertains to the findings and what we're being asked to do tonight. Don't all rush the mic.
I'll go first. As you can see, a lot of neighbors are here about this issue. And my name is Dan Dandrio. I live at 1004 South Olive Street. We submitted information which is in the packet. And we oppose the zoning change from R2 to R2 HOO of city lots 818 and 822 on West Tenth. Part of the reason, one thing that was in the comments there is incorrect. Putting four or five houses there is not consistent with this neighborhood. This is a, all like three-bedroom ranches, nice yards. People take care of their houses, their yards. Same on South Cypress. They're going to be facing the back of this property. This is not a win-win for us. This is a lose. We're going to see our housing evaluations go down when you've got this many houses there. You don't know what kind of parking is going to result from it. What kind of tenants are going to be there? Are these going to be rentals eventually?
That's, that, I'm sorry, but that, that's not part of this discussion, sir. I'm sorry, but that's not part of this discussion. Again, we're not going to talk about tenants and that sort of thing.
Okay, I get that. All right, so the 10th block, there's no parking for school on that street because of school. It's a heavily congested school travel zone. There's no sidewalks. The kids walk on the streets. And you get the middle school and the high school there. So now you're going to add three more driveways there, houses. They might, they might be parking on the street in the evenings. And in the evenings, these streets are empty from like 11th to 9th and even sometimes beyond every night. So you can traverse the streets. There's events at the school, like, you know, football, graduations, pack, whatever. And there's a lot of traffic on that street. If you start having cars parking at night on there, it's not going to go well. Especially with kids in school and stuff and kids walking from football games. The other part of this is, you know, you've got the noise issue, you've got all kinds of stuff that can happen. Having extra, I mean, we're only talking about one extra house, but still, that's congestion. And what we see is eventually, we go to sell our houses, we're going to see our property values go down because of this. They're not going to go up. You know, you're not building nice ranches here that are consistent with the neighborhood, which that was on the screen. It's not consistent with the neighborhood. So what I see is our value, yeah, we're going to pay the same property taxes right now. Those won't go down. But when it comes time to sell, that's going to be a bargaining chip for the seller, for the buyer. And we're going to probably lose 10 to 15% of our homes. And some of us have been in these homes for 20, 25 years, constantly fixing them to improve the value. So I don't see this being a win-win for us.
Thank you. All right, who is next?
All right, thank you.
Next on the list is Julie Duranio.
Hi, I'm Julie Dandrio. And I live at 1004 South Olive Street. I moved back to Ottawa in 1999 from Lenexa. And we chose our house there because of the quiet neighborhood ranch homes that were there because of the community and because of the closeness to the schools and the good schools, a good place to raise kids. And since then, we and our neighbors have worked hard to improve the values of our homes, improving them inside and out to increase their value and also to bring more to our community. I certainly welcome growth to our community, but I have to advocate for responsible growth. And that growth would be one that respects and enhances our neighborhood, not one that is going to take away from it. So with that, I would respectfully ask that you vote no on this rezoning issue. And thank you for listening tonight.
Thank you.
I apologize, but I cannot read the next one. Last name Christopher?
Yeah, I have nothing to add at this time.
Okay. And then we have Michelle Smith.
Hi, I'm Michelle Smith. I live at 1027 South Olive Street, which was the red roof house that was just directly next to the lots that are being rezoned. Just to reiterate, it's absolutely not consistent with the housing that we have in the neighborhood. You know, our lot, or our house probably sits on like two and a half of those lots. So, you know, the size of lots is definitely not consistent. But I do understand like the desire for growth. And so we come, and it's not something where we're disheartened by, you know, low-income families or anything like that. We were one and we worked really hard to get to the house that we're at right now. And so we invested our money, which we thought was wisely, in the neighborhood and the house. And so I would just love for you guys to reconsider the vote on the House because, you know, just to kind of respect the investment that we made, that we worked really hard for. It'd just be sad to see that fall. So that's what I would love to say.
Thank you.
The next one that we have is John Ball and Carol Ball?
We have nothing further to add this time.
Perfect. And that's all that we have registered.
Okay.
For this one.
For this one. Is there anything else that, would the applicant care to address anything? Or Zach, would you care to address anything?
Yeah, I would just say.
Just Slade, just state your name again. You don't need to state your address again.
Okay, Slade Van Venter. As far as the home value, I don't, I don't understand that. This will, I mean, these new houses, they're not, they're going to be nice houses. They're not big or anything, but they're, they're nice houses. So I, it'll increase the value of the neighborhood, in my opinion. You could ask, you know, a realtor in the audience if you want. But I mean, this will be, you know, and they might not like the extra housing, but as far as financially, what it'll do for the neighborhood, it will be, you know, increase the value of the, all their properties, not decrease.
I have a question.
Yes.
Just, have you built this house before?
Yes.
And what does it normally sell for? What do you normally put it on the market for?
Uh, just contracted one that's, it's, well, it's, I guess, a slightly different. So it's three-bed, two-bath, one-car garage, about the same square footage. And it just, for 240.
And how many square feet is it?
These will be, it's around 1,100. These will be probably just a hair over 1,100, 1,170.
So you're about 220 a square foot? Did I do that? No, I didn't do that right. 1,100 into 240?
I don't, I'm not, I'm not sure. But something like that, it'd be over 200. They'd probably be.
218.
It'd probably be 1,170 square feet, but yeah, something like that. So it's not a, you know, some junk house that's thrown up or anything. I mean, these are nice houses. They might not be the 2,500 square foot ranch. But not many people are going to afford that these days, no. So.
Well, thank you. I just, I wanted to, I guess I wanted to make it clear from, you know, Bill can talk about things in the construction and Gary can talk about things in excavation stuff. Some of you may know I can talk about things in the real estate business. And so a $217 per square foot house is not going to devalue those houses around it unless they're $400 a square foot. I don't think we have any $400 a square foot houses in the community. Or if we do, there's very few of them. And so I would, I understand everybody, well, I understand everybody's concern and we'll, but we'll close the, we'll close the meeting out and then have more discussion on that. I just wanted to get Slade's, I wanted to know what they sold for, so.
Yeah.
Okay, is there anything else? We would, if, if there has been somebody that hasn't spoken, that's been registered and now wants to say something, now's your time because I'm going to close the public hearing in just a second. Okay. The public hearing is closed. So now, commission discussion.
I just wanted to clarify if the desire was to, there will be, we're looking at building four houses in additional to the house that's currently there, correct? But if the decision was to make three, would we still need the overlay?
Not necessarily.
Because you'd be able to have the square footage?
No, and I met with Slade when we originally started out with this site. There were a number of different configurations that came through, whether it be single-family or potential duplex options. Again, with the R2 zoning, there is a bit of built-in flexibility right there as it is. And, you know, once you draw a line around that existing house, there's quite a few ways it could be drawn. So we sort of landed on this as an option as he was seeking this particular outcome.
Okay.
And to that, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead. I was just going to say to that, I would, I, because this is R2, a triplex could be built there.
Right.
You'd only need 10,000 square feet to build a triplex. You could actually build a triplex on two of these proposed lots, a single-family on one and a single-family on another. So, so there could, it could become even denser and less likely to be owner-occupied and more likely to be rental. So I think the way that they're headed is the, is the right way. You know, I think there's, we're not, we're not increasing the density. We're just shrinking the lot size.
That's, that's, that was one of the comments I was going to make. The other comment I would make is, talking about the size of the house in comparison, the developer, any developer could build that house without doing this overlay. And it would be strictly by the book. Like there's, the city couldn't stop him from building this house anywhere in the city of Ottawa. So as far as the size of the house and comparing to others, we can't, and I know we're not talking about that tonight, but, but bringing that up because of the comments, we can't, we can't stop a developer from building this house anywhere in the city of Ottawa because it, it meets all the requirements with the sizes. The only reason that we're talking about this is because the developer is short a couple feet on a lot. And we have been talking about this as commissioners and city commissioners have been talking this for months and months and months about changing the 50-foot minimum for these exact reasons.
I appreciate the concerns about street congestion. I appreciate the concerns about, um, street congestion, but all of these will have garages and off, off-street parking, and they're single-family homes, if that's what we're looking at with this overlay at this time.
One, one of the concerns that was brought up was sidewalks. Correct me if I'm wrong, but isn't it a requirement, Slade, for, don't you have to put sidewalks in front of your homes on new construction?
Not if there's not existing sidewalk on that side of the street.
Okay.
Which, and just as a note from the staff perspective, sidewalks tend to fall under more of the subdivision review territory, so it, it is a valid concern, it just doesn't necessarily apply strictly, um, with this particular application. And sidewalks as a whole are, uh, an ongoing discussion within the entire community.
And, and again, I want you guys all to understand, once, if this goes through us and then goes to the City Commission and is approved, just the housing opportunity overlay, then Slade will have to, uh, hire a, a survey slash engineering firm to design this for him and go through an extensive review process with the fire marshal, who's the fire chief, uh, the, the building inspector. I mean, this is not, the fact, if, if we put the overlay in tonight, this doesn't mean that tomorrow there's gonna be dozers out there scratching around building the property. He's got a lot of steps to go through before, before that happens. And my experience with the Design Review Committee is, uh, they're very meticulous and they make sure that it meets all of the code requirements of, of the city. And then that plat, once, once all that's done, then the plat will come back to us for our overview and recommendation to, uh, no, see, now the plat, we, we do the plat, don't we? We don't send that on to the city.
Depends on the type of subdivision, but the planning commission would see that, yes.
Yeah, yeah. So, so we would see it, which means that you could see it, and you could all, you could absolutely make comments at that time, maybe as a comment before the meeting, you know, before, in the public comment part of it, if you saw things on there that you were concerned about. We certainly wanna know things you're concerned about when, we actually have something for you to look at. Right now, we don't. Right now, we're just trying to decide, do we want to allow the housing opportunity overlay district to go on top of the existing? And so he can make the lot slightly smaller and put four single-family residences in there. So, anything else? Zach, anything else?
Uh, no other comments at this time.
Okay. Uh, we, if we, if we're gonna go forward with this, we're gonna need two separate motions. We're gonna need a motion, uh, to, uh, uh, let me stop and think here. Uh, we're gonna need a motion to accept the findings as presented or to create findings of our own. We're going to need to recommend approval to the City Commission to approve or deny the application. And we'll need that on both properties individually.
But the findings are being accepted as one?
No, findings, we have to do that for both of them. We'll have to do that twice.
Only on the ones, so that's why I'm asking.
Oh, it should be on there twice.
Yeah, it's on there twice.
Oh, is it? Okay, I'm sorry.
So we'll deal with eight eighteen West Tenth first.
I'll make the motion to accept the findings as presented on eight eighteen, and I would say eight, eight twenty-two if we can combine them like that.
Can we combine them?
I'm actually not sure.
Let's just do, let's do them separately, and that just, that's just...
Just to be safe.
Clear, yes, that's clear.
So I'll make the motion to accept the findings on eight eighteen West Tenth Street.
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any more discussion on that? Would you call the roll?
Vice Chair Crowley?
Yes.
Member Harris?
Yes.
Member Kane is absent. Member Streznik Dean?
Yes.
Chair Lantis?
Yes. Uh, next, we need a motion to recommend approval or disapproval to the City Commission.
I will make the motion to approve the application for eight eighteen West Tenth Street.
Is there a second on that?
I'll second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Would you call the roll?
Chair Lantis?
Yes.
Member Harris?
Yes.
Um, Member Kane is absent. Member Streznik Dean?
Yes.
Vice Chair Crowley?
Yes. Okay, next will be, uh, motion to approve the findings or modify the findings on eight twenty-two West Tenth.
I'll make the motion to accept the findings at eight twenty-two.
Um, I'll second.
Okay. There's a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, would you call the roll?
Vice Chair Crowley?
Yes.
Member Harris?
Yes.
Member Kane, absent. Member Streznik Dean?
Yes.
Chair Lantis?
Yes.
And I'll make the motion to approve the rezon at eight twenty-two.
I'll second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, would you call the roll?
Chair Lantis?
Yes.
Member Harris?
Yes.
Member Kane is absent. Vice Chair Crowley?
Yes.
Member Streznik Dean?
Yes.
Okay, those will be passed on to the City Commission, and I do wanna tell you that, that the City Commission now will have to act on these. So, um, I'm just, this is not, we're the, we're the jury. We're telling the judge that this is what we think, but they'll actually have to act on it as well. So, that's the next step in the process. So, I thank you guys all for your participation. Sometimes they don't come out the way we want them to, but I think that you'll have another opportunity once you see the plat, if you have any real objections to what he proposes finally, so, okay?
I, I would like to make a comment.
Okay.
I would encourage those opposed to this and the new homes being built to drive around town and look at some of Mr. Van De Venter's homes. I, I don't do any work for Mr. Van De Venter, I have no, no interest in his success or failure, but he does build a very nice home.
So, yeah, I would, and I'm a real estate agent, and I've never sold anything that's Slade nor been his agent at any time, but he does a great job of infill and he, and he does it right, so it looks good in your neighborhood. He's, he's, well, he is a very good infill, he's a very good neighbor. He, he thinks about the community when he builds a house. So, anyway, thank you all for coming. Uh, we're gonna move on to our next item on the agenda, which is eight twenty-five Main Street, a conditional use permit submitted by Christina Peatman. And I will open the public hearing. And Zach?
All right, as stated, this is an application for a conditional use permit at eight twenty-five South Main to allow for a group boarding home for adults. The property is zone R-two medium-density residential, uh, and is approximately point one seven acres or seventy-two hundred square feet, and has been undergoing construction over the past several years. The surrounding area is residential with R-two to the north, south, and west, and, that should be east, I apologize, and R-one located west across South Main Street. All surrounding uses are residential. Within the R-two district, group boarding homes for adults are allowed with a conditional use permit, provided the home has fewer than twenty residents. Section two dash three zero one of the zoning code defines a group boarding home for adults as a residential dwelling unit for persons eighteen years of age or over, not constituting a family, as defined in this section, provided, however, that this definition shall not include an existing or proposed use of a residential dwelling unit, which is in compliance with the definition of group home, as defined in KSA twelve seven three six. Such latter use shall be considered to be a single-family residential use and shall not be considered a group boarding home for adults. Section two dash three oh one goes on to define a family as one or more persons related by blood, marriage, or adoption or pursuant to legal guardianship, living together as a single housekeeping unit, or a group of not more than four unrelated persons, living together as a single housekeeping unit. In this case, the addition of a house manager pushes that number above four that is outlined. KSA twelve dash seven three six refers to those group homes, uh, that house adults with a disability or similar situations and does not apply in this case, referring to the previous slides. Uh, the proposed use would therefore meet the definition of a group boarding home and be subject to the requirement of a conditional use permit. To the left, you can see an image of the property, which does exist within a residential area and would house up to five residents, one being a house manager, and then four additional adult residents. The proposed plan, which is on the next slide, shows the floor plan, including bathrooms and a shared kitchen space. The building was constructed and designed in a manner to blend into the surrounding residential fabric in a style that is appropriate for the neighborhood. Parking for residents will be located in the rear of the building with access off of Princeton Street leading to a garage. Here you can see the generalized site plan, uh, provided by the applicant. On the slide, you can see the first floor plan of the pro, project, which includes bedrooms, living room, shared kitchen space, porch and rear area as well with washer and dryer. And then we have the second floor plan of the project, including the house manager bedroom, uh, and additional bedrooms upstairs. In determining a recommendation, staff had to find the following. First, whether approval of the conditional use would be consistent with the intent and purposes of these regulations. The intent of the R-two district is to provide for one, two, or three family dwellings with some accommodations for four-plus family dwellings as conditional uses and related residential uses and certain public uses. This district allows for moderate density for these types of dwelling units, and the proposed use would be consistent with the intent and purpose of the zone in which it is located. The surrounding blocks are zoned a mixture of R-one and R-two, which both allow for accommodation of a variety of residential types, including group boarding homes. The proposed use would allow for additional residential types and options for residents of Ottawa. Uh, second, whether the location of the proposed use is compatible to other land uses in the surrounding neighborhood. The area immediately surrounding the subject site is composed of residential uses with a commercial use located at the corner of Ninth and South Main Street to the southwest. The proposed use has an aesthetically compatible existing design with the surrounding neighborhood and would not create negative visual contrast with existing residential uses. The proposed use would be compatible with the surrounding area and allow for additional housing options along a major transit corridor with access to commercial and educational institutions. Third, whether the proposed use places an undue burden on the existing transportation, utility, and service facilities in the area affected, and if so, whether additional facilities can be provided. Uh, development site is currently connected to existing facilities, and that includes water and sewer and includes access to the existing road network. The proposed use would not place undue burden on those aforementioned facilities, and what is already available will continue to be sufficient. The applicant has included parking for the maximum number of residents within the proposed use to be located at the rear of the property, and this setup would meet the required parking and is similar to other uses in towns with large student populations, such as Lawrence. Next, whether the proposed use is made necessary or desirable because of changed or changing conditions in the area affected. Uh, there is a high demand for and a limited supply of moderately priced housing options in Ottawa. Uh, this proposed use would provide an alternative for potential residents seeking affordable options for housing, but also help meet a growing need for that housing in Ottawa. And the redevelopment of the existing building to allow for this additional housing is a positive outcome, and roads and utilities are currently available for the site. Uh, next, the length of time that the subject property has remained vacant or undeveloped. Uh, the property has been uninhabited but not vacant since the redevelopment of the property began several years ago. As such, staff did not find this consideration applicable. Next, whether the applicant's property is suitable for the proposed conditional use. The location of the property is within an older neighborhood of Ottawa, which has historically seen a variety of housing types and densities. The site is suitable for the proposed development, and the proposed use is well under the resident maximum for a group boarding home, uh, which is twenty, and, and they are proposing five residents. The number of residents would not create an additional burden or disrupt the character of the area as the size is similar to general household sizes. Next, whether the proposed conditional use would be in conformance to and further enhance the implementation of the city's comprehensive plan. Uh, one stated goal of the comprehensive plan is to support development of affordable and appropriate housing for all segments of the community. The proposed use is consistent with this goal. The proposed development addresses the needs of younger residents within the city of Ottawa, allowing for appropriate and affordable housing for a segment of the population that is often a full-time student or working jobs that generally do not pay enough to allow for more than rental living situations. Next, whether the proposed conditional use, if it complies with all the conditions upon which the approval is made contingent, will not adversely affect the property in the area affected. The surrounding area, as mentioned, is primarily residential and has been built out for, at or over a century. Uh, and the proposed use is within ex, within an extensively renovated and rehabilitated existing structure uh, that will not adversely affect neighboring properties. It is designed to be functional and attractive and otherwise meets standards outlined within the zoning code. This factor was not found to be applicable, it deals with solid waste disposal facilities, sanitary landfills, et cetera. Uh, and then such other factors, as the planning commission may deem relevant from the facts and evidence presented in this application. In regard to comments about the expiration or end of the CUP, if granted, Article twenty-six does outline the situations in which this may be the case. Uh, for expirations of a CUP, uh, the authorized activity, service, or use would have to have ceased for a continuous period of three-hundred-and-sixty-five days for any reason. Uh, CUPs subject to termination due to the provisions of paragraph two above may file a written request with the zoning administrator at least thirty days prior to the expiration date for an extension, uh, to begin to reinstitute the activity, service, or use. So essentially, if this ever stops for one year, uh, the CUP would effectively expire, unless they applied for an extension. Uh, and then for revocation of the CUP or simply getting it taken away from them, uh, the conditions of the appro, the approval would have to have not been met, uh, or the use would have had to have been substantially expanded or deviated from the original intent. In this case, five residents, uh, that are being requested. Uh, or a court of law and/or federal or state agency has to have found the use to be legal or a nuisance, as defined by Kansas statutes. Lastly, the recommendations of professional staff. Uh, staff recommends that the CUP to allow the development of the proposed group boarding home for adults be approved. The project as proposed meets applicable standards and is compatible with the surrounding land use and generally consistent with the neighborhood's physical character, as well as the stated goals and intent of the zoning code and future land use map. As stated, staff recommends approval of the application for a conditional use permit at eight twenty-five South Main to allow group boarding home for adults with no additional conditions for approval. And the recommendation of the planning commission will be forwarded on to the next available City Commission hearing for final determination.
Okay, thank you, Zach. Uh, is the applicant here, or do they wish to speak to the commission?
I am the property manager, my name is Amy McFadden. Um, I would like to speak if I could, please.
State, give your, your address, and you will have three minutes.
Amy McFadden, my address is three twenty-eight North Terry Street in Ottawa.
Go ahead.
I just want, um, to make it clear that when you hear the, the term boarding home, um, I think of a big house with a bunch of rooms and a bunch of people or young adults living in it. Um, what we have proposed is each resident will have their own lease. Each resident will have a locked bedroom, um, with, they, basically like their own studio apartment. It's not gonna be, um, a free-for-all in there, there's not gonna be, I am the property manager. We may pick a, a resident to be the, like, the house manage, the house manager, so to speak, but ultimately, I'm, I'm gonna be the one in charge and I'm going to be policing it, um, to ensure that, um, the residents there are obi, obeying the laws, um, upkeep of the house, all, all the things. But each resident will have their own lease, each resident will have their own key to their own bedroom. They can leave it and lock it, and nobody else is gonna get in there. Um, it's gonna be super private for these kids.
Okay. Is that it?
Yes, sorry.
Thank you. Uh, is there anybody else who, you were headed this way?
My name is Scott Christopher, and I own the house, and, uh, I'm, I'm involved with getting it done.
And your address, Scott?
Oh, my address is eleven thirty-seven South Mulberry.
Thank you.
Just south of here. Uh, so, the, we're, we're gearing up to get the garage, um, turned in. So it's a three-car garage, it's twenty-four feet deep, thirty feet wide. And you'll be able, there'll be parking one car on either side of it, so, five spots. And I think we were talking about the setbacks today, I think the garage needs to be something like twenty-five or thirty feet back, so... So, if anybody else was to show up, there's still room to park. I don't see any need for somebody to be parking on Princeton. And of course, there's no parking on Main Street. That's, I think that's about all I have to add.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wish to speak to this?
Evening. Karen Harris, 1801 South Princeton Street, Ottawa. Basically, the landlords and I have come and are here in support of them because this is a landlord issue, this is a housing issue. But I've been managing rentals for 25 years. I've never seen the housing market tighter than it is right now. I get calls every day from people looking, have been looking, can't find anything, and are desperate. The last year or two, the colleges had to book kids in hotels because they were scrambling to find housing for them. The university is growing, Ottawa is growing, but the rental housing options are not growing. I've rented to many students over the years. I've had no problems with them. Folks assume that with students, it's one great big party. Not necessarily. Actually, over the years, issues have come up for most landlords that have been with non-students. Some live like family, some just share the space. Either way, does it really matter? As many as know, family is way more than blood. Sports teams, club members, soldiers, brothers and sisters in Christ, brothers and sisters in law enforcement. I read over the staff's report, the definitions of the zoning regulations talk about really unclear. I don't understand the need for the conditional use permit. We have such a need for housing for everyone. Doesn't it make sense to let people rent houses to students as a group or individually? If each student is renting their bedroom dorm-style or fully furnished, how does dorm-style, how is it different than a dorm house on campus? By encouraging more houses like this, it will open up other houses for non-students and families. You have someone making a nice, safe place for students to live, and they're having to jump through many hoops. Instead, we should be thanking them and encouraging them to keep it up. Trust me, there are some pretty bad rentals in this town, and I wouldn't let my dog live in it, let alone my kids. So, hats off to you guys for doing a fabulous job. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes, my name is John Pasha. I live at 1001 South Cedar Street. I am actually currently the Director of Residence Life at Ottawa University, and I'd like to speak in support of this. As she mentioned, I'm sure you guys are well aware, housing has always, has been tight, very, very tight recently. And I'd also like to speak to the part of quality rentals. Having a quality rental is huge for our student success. I know that we have seen many students who have even been living off-campus one semester and chose to come back to university housing as a result of rentals not being adequate for their success. And to have another place is going to be huge to have more successes, students, more successful sports teams, which I know the community enjoys coming to the athletic events as well, so.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, Rhuda Hapley. I live at 829 South Main Street. And my question was about the group boarding home and what it was going to be. And today, I figured out it is OU. And so, I'm fine with that as long as there's no problems with noise and all that because my mom lives behind one, and it's just a mess. But he was talking about five cars in that lot. I don't see how that's possible unless you plan on going onto other properties because... There's a very tight spot back there.
So the shed's going to be gone?
Yeah, the shed's going to be gone.
I apologize, but you'll need to come up to the mic so then everybody can hear. So we'll wait until she's done, if you don't mind. Sorry.
Okay.
Okay.
Just as a general, I can sort of address that comment, just so you don't necessarily have to get up. So, right now, the width of the lot is about 50 feet. Typically, a parking space, you're going to need about a nine-foot wide parking stall. That is the standard requirement. So they do meet the requirements for five parking spots. It's not to say it wouldn't necessarily be tight, but they do meet that requirement. That is the standard for all parking lots within the city. It's typically a national standard as well, unless you're preparing a parking lot for, say, electric vehicles or large semi-trailers or something of that nature.
Okay. I'm just, was just kind of curious how you can put that all in there.
Absolutely, totally understand that.
Yeah, I have no problem with the OU students being there. Now, I was just kind of confused about the group boarding home.
Yeah.
So, but I just hope it all goes well.
Thank you. Anyone else? I'm grabbing the mallet. I'll close the public hearing with no one else to speak to it. All right, so. Mission discussion.
Yeah, I would like to say, kind of comment on what Karen commented on. The fact that it is a little bit confusing as to why the city requires this, just because the people do not, because they're not related. I mean, I know this happens all across town where students live in four- or five-bedroom houses, and they're not doing as much work as this builder has done to this house, even going as far as adding a, correct me if I'm wrong, but this house is sprinkled now. So, went over and beyond what lots of houses in this town are today. And it is very, it's confusing to me even, the fact that someone would have to go through this process just because there's four or five people in there that aren't brothers and sisters. That's kind of confusing to me, too.
But five people who were, say, adults in the same family could rent this, and we would never have to hear about it.
Right, and kind of addressing that, it's, this was something that was brought to staff's attention. This isn't something we are actively going out and checking or seeking. It's an unfortunate fact that our code currently is outlined this way. You know, boarding homes, I think, maybe it's Karen, I'm not sure, mentioned. You know, they bring to mind a certain image, large, you know, kind of, for lack of a better, I don't like using it, sort of, but like tenement-style sort of development or something of that nature, which is not really what this is, and it hasn't really meant something like that for, I mean, we're approaching 100 years, probably. So, it's more of an unfortunate situation that we currently do have a lot of hoops, and this project was brought to staff's attention. And to ensure that it could move forward with the recommendation of approval, they did have to meet the standards that were outlined within our code. Ideally, in the future, we are looking towards opportunities to make this smoother. I mean, a lot of the items that come before the planning commission are geared towards trying to make housing options more available to the citizens of Ottawa. And that is a really important part of our long-term vision as a city. So, I definitely understand where the frustration can be that we do have a lot of hoops when it comes to something as arcane sounding as a group boarding home. And because of some technicalities of the resident type or something like that, we then have to go through this process. I mean, like you were saying, there are a lot of instances where we would just never know or check because, you know, they're by related adults and they can do this or something of that nature. That's just not the situation we found ourselves in with this particular case.
The other comment that I would make, looking at the plot plan, site plan, does the applicant plan on putting solid surface parking? Because right now, it states gravel.
That is part of the discussion. I can let the applicant explain more on that, but parking coming off of a street is required to be paved.
Yeah, that's what I'm asking. So, I guess I'm asking you, surely that's going to be a requirement?
It is part of the requirement, so.
And this is just a comment of the general discussion, not with this project in mind, but we're not the only community that faces the non-family members, the limit on the non-family members living in a unit. Got some friends who are landlords, and they face it in Shawnee, and they face it in Lawrence.
Emporia.
Emporia, is it?
They used to, at least.
So, it's not unique to us as far as that goes, and I don't know how we'll overcome it, I understand why it's there. But I'm not sure that it's, on a small project, I'm not sure that it's necessary if there's some way to differentiate.
And there may be an opportunity for us to explore when it comes to, say, the number. You know, I mentioned earlier that the max amount allowed is 20 adults, you know, and this applicant is only for five, and that's a pretty appropriate number for a household size. I don't know, anywhere, I grew up with a family of five. So, that is something that could potentially be explored. I'm getting a little hypothetical and on track here, but I mean, I think there's opportunity for us to work as a city to see where we can, you know, smooth out processes.
And I see that it's almost eight o'clock, and we still have quite a bit of agenda to go. So I'm going to ask, is there anything else that we need to discuss about this? Is there any?
I'd like to comment.
Sure.
As far as the parking situation, like Mr. Martin said, the standard is nine foot. My service trucks, yeah, nine foot's not enough. But your average student isn't going to be driving a duly or a large truck. You're going to be into more of the economy cars or smaller sports cars and standard-sized vehicles. So I, yeah, nine feet for my vehicles is tight, but if the property meets the nine-foot standards, I think they'll probably be fine.
If they have a rugby player that comes from Wyoming and brings his big club cab duly, he's going to have to park outside.
He's going to have to park somewhere else, exactly. And you know, they run into that kind of stuff at K-State.
Yep.
We ran, I remember in Allen County, there was kids brought daddy's duly off to school.
All right.
But as far as, you know, we were discussing the, how it's worded, Zach tried to explain it to me, and I thought I had it when I left his office. Then I went home and I read it some more, and the more I read it, the more confusing it sounded. And I, I still question our ability to even govern that, but that's, I guess that's probably up for another date and possibly get the attorney involved.
I was going to say, again, that's above our pay grade. That'd be city commission because they'd have to establish a housing authority, and good luck with that.
Well, and how, how does the city plan to enforce this, this gentleman? I mean, there's no system in place to police it.
Let's do this. Let's, you're on a roll. So why don't you make a motion to approve the, or to accept the findings as our own, and then we can allow him to go on, get this thing finished, so they can get people in there.
I will make the motion to accept staff findings as presented.
All right, is there a second? Second, any discussion on that? Would you call the roll?
Vice Chair Crowley?
Yes.
Member Harris?
Yes.
Member Stresnick Dean?
Yes.
Chair Lantus?
Yes.
Member Kane is absent.
Is there a motion to recommend approval to the Ottawa City Commission?
So moved.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Would you call the roll?
Chair Lantus?
Yes.
Member Kane is absent. Vice Chair Crowley?
Yes.
Member Stresnick Dean?
Yes.
Member Harris?
Yes.
Thank you all. Thank you for your comments, and we hope to be approving more student housing. All right. We're just, we're going to take a short break, a short break. So, the next thing on the agenda will be the vacation easement submitted by Sunrise Estate, but we'll take a short break, five minutes.
Staff has also included a very preliminary site plan adjusting to allow for the existing easements and still adhere to and still adhere to required setbacks of the zoning district. So no other, uh, processes would be required such as a variance or anything of that nature. And then findings, uh, in determining a recommendation, staff found the following. One that due in legal notice has been given and notice for the surrounding properties regarding, I apologize. Uh, oh no, it's July tenth, I'm sorry, it's been long. July tenth public hearing was sent out on June eighteenth and this meets the standards of city regulations and practice and staff finds that it provides ample time for adjacent properties to petition or comment on the proposed vacation. Second, that no private rights will be injured or endangered and based on staff review, it was determined that there would be no injury or endangerment of private rights by allowing this vacation and that the public will suffer no loss or inconvenience. And staff did not find that there would be any loss or inconvenience to the public through the permission of this vacation. So with that, staff recommends approval of the request for a vacation of an existing easement at eight twenty-three East Wilson and this recommendation will be forwarded on to the next available city commission hearing for final determination.
And nobody's here from the applicant. Um, is there anybody here? Is there anybody, is, is the applicant, I guess is on, uh?
Yeah, Chairman.
Yes.
Uh, this is Dave Anderson, yeah, I'm online, uh, and, uh, Commissioner, thank you for considering this. This was brought to your attention as we said earlier and, uh, we took a, a suggestion, uh, and narrowed the structure so that it wouldn't impede on the, uh, western, uh, easement. So we had it redesigned and it'll fit now, with this vacation, it'll fit.
Thank you.
Yes.
Anybody here in the audience wish to comment on this application? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. And we'll ask for, uh, Commissioner's comments. Please refresh my memory on why we have two exhibit A's.
Because this one was an existing easement that was a book and page.
That was vacated a long time ago.
After, when it was surveyed like twenty years.
That's what I was thinking, but I wanted to make sure because they've got the same, exactly the same terminology on them, so, okay. Uh, any other questions or comments or concerns by the commission?
I appreciate the applicant's willingness to make changes based on our suggestions. Um, was there any concern by the neighbor who's, who, who's up against that easement?
The fence item, I'm not sure, that, uh, kind of left the room with the applicant, so I'm, I'm assuming it was discussed.
Okay, okay, and there, there's no actual utility in this easement?
No, there is not.
Uh, Chair?
Yes.
Uh, yeah, uh, uh, to the comment by Commissioner, uh, yeah, I spoke to them af- at, uh, outside that meeting and then, uh, we've connected by email, um, and, and there, it's just the fence issue that has a little bit of drift into our property and it's not concerning to me, but he's, he's reached out, we have each other's contact. Um, if we need to talk further, we're open to do that.
Very good, thanks, you've got direct communication with him, so we can take that off our plate.
Yep.
Uh, is there, if there's no other, uh, discussion, I'd, uh, entertain a motion to modify or accept the findings as presented.
I'll make the motion to accept.
I'll second it.
There's a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Not, would you call the roll?
Member Harris?
Yes.
Member Streznik Dean?
Yes.
Chair Lantis?
Yes.
Member Kane is absent and Vice Chair Crowley?
Yes.
I'd entertain a motion to recommend approval of the application for the vacation of easement to the city commission.
I'll make that motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Motion and a second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, would you call the roll?
Chair Lantis?
Yes.
Member Kane is absent, Vice Chair Crowley?
Yes.
Member Harris?
Yes.
Member Streznik Dean?
Yes.
All right, thank you all for that, um, and that one's finally off our plate and the developer can move forward. Uh, new business, twelve oh-one West fifteenth conditional use permit, uh, application submitted by Clint Art on behalf of the Rebecca Blau Trust and Sunflower Care, do you have any updates on that, Zach?
All right, as you stated, it's an application for a CUP at twelve oh-one West fifteenth. Uh, we are, as a commission, aware of the site, it was just here for a rezoning of the property, uh, to allow, uh, for the development of the site into a nursing home facility. Uh, it is in a primarily residential area and is a currently undeveloped four-point-three acre tract, uh, and is just a little bit away from the intersection with Eisenhower Avenue. Um, to the west of the property is a church and the south is an existing nursing home facility, Rock Creek, and the applicant is requesting this CUP, uh, to allow for the property to be developed into a nursing home facility as stated. Uh, per section six dash three zero one and the adopted zoning ordinance, uh, nursing home or similar facility is allowed only within the R-three zoning district and only within that district by approval of a CUP, which the applicant is now seeking. Uh, the proposed facility would consist of singular residential building that would accommodate up to sixteen residents and include a storage building and garage and a kids play area for a proposed staff daycare, which would be located within the building as well as parking for visitors and staff. And the applicant anticipates minimal impact on parking, given the lower number of residents and the likelihood of them being active drivers, and also anticipates the facility providing approximately fifteen jobs. This proposed use would be in line with the existing Rock Creek facility to the south and would not be out of, out of character for the surrounding area, which already consists of a variety of uses and districts. Uh, and here we have a GIS image of the sites, uh, on the left and the proposed site plan on the right. Uh, I will note, the applicant is aware that this serves as a tentative site plan in the sense that when it comes for the commission to take action, they are in the process of completing the finalized site plan that is going to be going through review with the DRC. Um, in the interest of their timeframe, they had requested to be placed on a July agenda, so we are working to make sure that the commission knows that the CUP is coming and that any conditions, uh, or comments that are made through the DRC will be addressed uh, by the time of the action that will be taken. Um, essentially summarize my summary of findings, um, but the proposal has been generally reviewed by the DRC and did not find any outstanding concerns about the proposed CUP based on the preliminary site plan. Uh, so the proposed plan, uh, provided a general outlook and staff determined that the general size of the building would be appropriate and the provided parking would exceed the required amounts, uh, for this use. Uh, and the complete plan and review of considerations for approval will be provided. As noted on the rezoning application, utilities and public works also provided comments regarding the drainage easement, easement slash ditch that traverses the north-south line of the western side of the property, although the proposed use should not impact that. Additionally, staff has recommended that the existing curb cut that exists along the southern property line at West fifteenth be utilized for site access. If the access point is to be moved to the west, the curb cut will need to be removed and rebuilt as a curb built to city standards. Uh, and Planning Commission will have the opportunity to take action at this, on this item at the July twenty-fifth public hearing. Again, if there are additional comments or concerns, there is the opportunity to move the item, um, or staff may request that it be moved as well pending, um, those potential comments.
Anything, anybody, questions?
I do have a question, it's just curious, is, do you know if this is also the Blau that is the neighboring property? Or is that just coincidence?
It is.
So obviously the neighboring property that's going to be looking at this has no problem with this.
And they do not.
Is there a reason why we're, they're pursuing a CUP instead of just rezoning it as R-three?
They're doing both.
They're doing both, okay.
So they're rezoning R-three, that was brought to the commission a few weeks ago.
Right.
Um, and they are wanting to run semi-concurrently the application for a CUP, um, because even with the rezoning to R-three, a nursing home is still a CUP.
I got you, okay, that's what I wasn't clear on, thank you.
Yes.
Anything else?
Billy wasn't here at the last meeting when this was discussed, um, but I will say, and I don't know if you're familiar with him, it's the same owner that owns, uh, the two, um, memory care homes in Baldwin. Those are very, very nice facilities and they blend in very well with the neighbors. They're, they're very well kept, very well managed.
Good, just another, uh, another niche of the housing market that we need to fill, um, and, uh, so this, this will help, needed, needed.
And it'll keep them here in town instead of having to go out of town.
I'm excited, I hope they go through with the, uh, I hope they go through with the onsite daycare because I think we can point that out to other employers, uh, as a, a way to attract workers, uh, that they needed workers as if they have onsite daycare.
I know of at least two of the residents in the Baldwin homes that are originally from the Williamsburg area and they're just, there wasn't facilities available here in Ottawa for them. So they ended up clear, I say clear up Baldwin, but it's a considerable drive for some.
Do we want to combine the next two?
We, we can, um, they're similar, there's a few differences on my slides, um, but I can at least provide a summary for the first one and we can kind of move through that. Um, if you want to go ahead and start that, we can go ahead and.
Let's, okay, the, no, item number two is the nine oh-one South Cherry preliminary plat application submitted by Lindsay Vought on behalf of Lark LLC. And then item number three is nine oh-one South Cherry preliminary planned unit development, residential, I'm assuming. You've got PUD, but I'm guessing it's a PUD R, application submitted by Lindsay Vought on behalf of Lark LLC.
Yes, so this is again, um, it, it's been a project that's been in discussion for a few months and, uh, is now moving, um, fairly straightforwardly after conversations with staff, um, but they're applying for both a preliminary plat and a PUD, um, to allow for a development of duplex, uh, two dwelling homes, uh, at the corner of Ninth and Cherry, nine oh-one South Cherry. Um, site is currently undeveloped, five point seven oh-seven acres, um, and it's located just along South Cherry Street between East Ninth and East Tenth, surrounded by existing residential development and zone parcels. It is actually zone R-two H-O-O, um, two-family housing opportunity overlay district. Uh, and that does allow for the proposed use of duplexes by right. And the property to the immediate north is zone MHS, manufactured home subdivision, uh, to the south and west is R-one, single-family residential, and to the east is an additional R-two H-O-O as well as a small section of R-one H-O-O. Uh, the applicant is requesting the preliminary plat and the PUD, uh, to allow for the development of the property as one lot and is outlined in the following case. Uh, here you can see the outline of the property, again, it's fairly large, um, takes up an entire, uh, block right there. Uh, and again, there's a variety of zoning, a variety of residential use types over here, um, but you can get at least a general idea of it as well as the existing utility situation. And this, uh, this particular document, uh, we will print out a larger one for, um, review as well and it was included in the packet, but this is the proposed preliminary plat and site plan that was received by staff. Uh, it is still going on, undergoing review by the DRC, um, with last week being a holiday and some staff changes within the city, um, including, uh, public works and utilities. Uh, we are in the process of still collecting our different comments and our feedback for the applicant uh, and plan on having those to them this week for them to address, uh, and provide revisions and things of that nature. Uh, this would include updating any, uh, incorrect information on the preliminary exhibits, which to an extent the applicant has already addressed, including, um, very standard things like zoning information, including, uh, legal descriptions, uh, things of that nature. Um, some of the larger discussion items are going to include, um, just utility discussions and some of those processes. But utilities in the DRC and everyone else has seen this several times, um, within our regular meetings, so they have already been doing the work on the backend to make sure that, uh, when this reaches the planning commission, it will be good. Um, we're also, uh, like I said, undergoing review of the utilities components and like I've also said, we plan on having those comments, uh, confirmed or addressed by time of the public hearing. Uh, so, public hearing is currently scheduled for July twenty-fifth. If these concerns are not addressed, this item would be moved to the next available meeting date for consideration or Planning Commission may choose to move that, um, of your own choice for further review and consideration. Uh, so you'll have that opportunity to take that action on the July twenty-fifth public hearing, um, and that can be for either approving the preliminary plat, uh, nine oh-one South Cherry Street or referring that item to the next meeting. Uh, the PUD is largely the same, uh, so we have the same background as far as the size of the property. You're well aware of that now, of what it looks like, as well as the plan that was included. Um, and the recommendation would be the same, you would have the opportunity to take action at that next meeting or refer it on to the next available planning commission meeting for consideration. Um, again, with us having regular meetings, uh, much more frequently now, that doesn't necessarily push back the timeframe as much, um, but again, we are working closely with the applicant to make sure that, um, we're able to move this through at a nice pace. Um, property's been vacant for a while and there's been a lot of interest, so we are hoping, um, to make sure we are getting these items in a timely manner.
Questions for Zach?
I believe the applicant is online as well.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I do have a question. Um, I guess my question's coming from knowing the history of this property and I'm just kind of curious how, uh, and I'm, I would assume that the contractor is going to do his due diligence and maybe the contractor is not aware, but I, I do believe the contractor is aware, but what, what is the process for the city in, in the situation like this where, and I'm not even sure if you're aware, but a lot of the south half of this property over a period of, I don't know, ten years, was, uh, was filled in with miscellaneous fill? Uh, and I'm going to say I was one of the persons that did that, the guy charged people to fill it in with, with brick, rock. It, 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 it wasn't garbage, but it was, uh, fillable type material. And I'm just curious, through the, uh, through the approval process with engineering, how, how that, what the steps are in making sure that, um, that the ground is, has the proper compaction for that?
I know that the discussion has come up at least along the southeastern portion of the site, um, as to not allowing structures on there. It, they originally proposed a plan that did have structures going all the way along the southeastern portion, um, and I, my background, you're right, was not as filled in as I guess that piece of property is. Um, but they did, uh, work with us on moving the properties farther, or the dwellings farther north. Um, I, I am not an engineer and I will say that, and we are waiting further comments from, uh, David Hamby, the city engineer. Um, I do believe to an extent we are aware of it and Lindsay, the applicant, uh, is an engineer as well, she may be able to speak a little bit more to, uh, how they are addressing some of those items, uh, which I know she had to do a family thing kind of in the middle of our rezoning discussion, so if she's online, she may be able to address those.
Lindsay, I see you're taking your mute off, so would you like to address some things?
Sure, um, so our firm prepared this site plan, um, which details the utilities and the parking and the way the, the buildings are going to be laid out. The, um, what you're referring to with the fill and kind of the, the structural integrity of the ground underneath the buildings would be investigated at a later date with the architect and the, perhaps they might have to involve a geotechnical specialist to do some soil samples, um, to see about the foundations. But at this point, we, our firm is just looking at the layout of the road and the utilities, um, kind of the horizontal work before any buildings could, would be designed and built.
In addition, in the, in addition to what Mr. Vought said, they, they would go in and do boring logs. They would actually have a geotechnical company come in there and do borings in a pattern to take soil samples and compaction tests and to make sure the soil's suitable for that. Um, I've, I've been involved in projects like that where that's had to happen. Um, my only question is, on the stormwater runoff, is there going to be a retention pond in the, be the southeast corner of that property? And is that southeast corner owned by the same people or is that a different landowner? Because I know that southeast, well, basically the whole eastern half of that is floodplain.
South, sorry, go ahead.
Sorry, yeah, the eastern and the southeastern portion, um, we are aware of drainage and that is one of the ongoing items that we are getting clarification on, so I don't have a direct answer for you at the moment.
But is it correct that if you are tied to the floodplain, it's not required?
I believe so.
At one point it was, I, I don't know that they changed it.
I, I was thinking it's not required.
Yeah.
If you're tied to the floodplain, retention or detention is not required.
Okay.
Yeah.
That is correct, that's what we've been told. They did ask us to enclose the storm sewer along the south side, um, from Cherry Street. from Cherry Street through the property to the eastern side of the property.
Alright, thank you. Any other questions at this point?
I, I do know, because I've, I've looked at this property before, they do have access to sanitary sewer to the south at Tenth and Cottonwood and within the last, probably within the last year, the city upgraded the water line on the north side of Ninth Street. That, and then, of course, they've got water down the west side also, but there's, the water and sewer is there.
Perfect, makes our job a little easier. Anything else? If not, we'll move along. Oh, that's, takes care of all of the new business, staff comments?
Staff comments, again, we have a few upcoming sessions for the comp plan. These are generalized informational sessions and I apologize, the dates immediately slipped me. As I said, at late July and early August, the dates are definitely on the comprehensive plan website. We are still establishing the official locations for those, but we do encourage everyone to attend. If you know anybody, please let them know. We had one at the ORC last night with a grand total of zero people showing up unfortunately, which, that's fine, it happens, there was a kids' party going on there and I think anyone who walked in would have probably turned around, so totally get that. But there was an info session held prior to the July fourth week and we did have some attendees there, which was great, including Mayor Skipmore, so it was great to have a little back and forth communication, that was the one hosted here at City Hall. But again, we like to get plenty of attendance, so let people know to check out the website and to take our survey. If nothing else, that survey's a really valuable to, tool for us. Info sessions are just info sessions, but the more information we can get from people, that's great. Those are the primary comments from staff at the moment.
And those, you'll have those on the upcoming meetings you'll have on the Facebook page?
Yes, yeah, we post that to, we work with IT to make sure that gets on social media. So we have it always up on our comprehensive plan info page, as long as they're still running through and then we'll update accordingly. Then, yeah, we do push them out onto the social media.
Well, if you do, if you do social media or if you know anybody that does social media, have them share them to their, to their groups and encourage people to come. Commissioner comments, do we have any?
Yeah, I do have a quick question. I was not present at the last meeting. I did watch it and I do, I do wonder, have a follow-up question to, to Kane's question about the setback requirement for the overhead power lines that are going over the kiddie water play area. What, what, what was decided there? Because I, I do know there are setback requirements for that.
I am not sure. I, go ahead.
Director Nice addressed that in the last meeting. It did go through the review process just like any other application would have and it was approved by the, by our GBA.
So it was approved going against our requirements?
No, it met the requirements.
Okay. I can stand here and say for a fact it does not meet the requirements. I, I, and I know this just by being a contractor and being in these situations, there are setback requirements that do not allow watertight things going underneath, especially directly underneath a power line.
So in our, hold on, I'll get our pool regulations off.
And, and we don't need to discuss this now, I'm just curious.
Sure, because I never, I never heard what the answers were, but I, I would like, I would like you to show me that after the meeting.
Yeah, that's perfect, I will.
Okay.
I'd like to see it also.
Alright.
Except for me.
But thank you.
Mr. Harris, Mr. Streznik, I would just like to, just a quick comment. I had coffee with the Economic Development Director for the county FCDC this week and discussion was housing and I'm glad you guys are all taking an open mind toward housing because we have two-point-seven percent unemployment in Ottawa right now, which is basically, we're fully employed. I mean, that's, anything under three, they consider we're fully employed. Businesses can't expand, we can't recruit new businesses if we don't have a place for a workforce to live. So the things that we can do to help that and not be so worried about what's gonna create traffic in my neighborhood or, you know, it's, I mean, we're gonna, we need to look at everything really well, I think we do, but I think we need to look at all, all types of housing as needed in the community right now, especially workforce housing. Because workforce housing, we're desperately short on right now. So, anyway, that's, that's my comment and Paul would be happy to talk to you, any of you at any time about the needs and he's working with the state to try to get additional housing grants and he's doing what he can to try to, he says he wakes up in the morning and thinks about workforce and then that makes him think about housing and then that makes him think about daycare and so he starts down that rabbit hole. So, anyway, that's all I have. Announcements, July twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four, Planning Commission meeting at noon at City Hall. August fourteenth, twenty twenty-four, Planning Commission meeting at seven PM at City Hall. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.